I'm gonna call, turn my mic on so it don't get yelled at. Call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen, October fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. See, for the, oops, sorry. Everyone's read the agenda, if there's no changes, we'll accept it as written. Announcements, Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the standing announcement that this meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being audio and video recorded. The 2016 Annual Town Meeting Warrant is currently open for citizen warrant article submittals through November twenty-third at four P.M. And what's not on the agenda today, but announcement, is that we've scheduled a forty-B workshop, which is a joint meeting between the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, October twentieth, from five to seven in this room. The public is more than welcome to attend and hear what the consultant has to say. This will be a forty-B professional, Ed Marchant, he will be, I believe, the zoning board's consultant during any upcoming forty-B application hearings. That's it.
All right. Pending contracts?
We have two pending contracts. One is an employment agreement for the police chief. It's a three-year renewal. His contract expires this year. The base, the salary is one seventy-three oh eighty-four, as listed on the agenda, so hopefully everybody will be good with renewing that. Thank you, Chief. The second item is called a community compact agreement. It's for town administration, really, and the board with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. This doesn't cost us anything. It's a new program, as it says on the agenda here, for municipalities to receive state assistance to implement certain best practices, and they give you a whole category of what types of best practices or programs they would accept you implementing. They provide financial or other assistance. We've selected updating our financial policies, which was something referenced in a Department of Revenue Operational Review of the Finance Department in 2012. That's been accepted by the state. They would like the board's endorsement that we're willing to join this community compact. So what it, what it gets you is a little higher rating levels for things like grants and other state programs that might be offered to municipalities, and it really kind of makes your town look good to the state. So I think we want to do it, and-
If I could add in, part of the idea of it was there's, you know, Massachusetts has the most small towns in, of any state, and so it's a way for kind of getting all these best practices together on all sorts of different levels, so Massachusetts can kind of, the Commonwealth can take this all in and then distribute it back out to town, so, and an act will be helping, in a way will be helping to make the state better.
Well, it sounds like a great thing to me. I think in a case like this, even though you want our consensus, I think a formal vote would be good, just so it's on the record, so if somebody wants to make a motion-
I'll make a motion to approve the contracts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Libby.
Great. There is a signing ceremony in Barnstable on November seventeenth at eleven A.M., and any of you would be invited to go. We're gonna try to get one or two of us there. It's kind of a trip for, you know, half an hour ceremony, but they want-
What's the date?
November seventeenth at eleven A.M.
I might be there anyway.
Tuesday.
All right. That takes care of-
For what, Libby, sorry?
For the signing. There's several other communities that have been approved, and they're doing a signing ceremony all at once.
Takes care of pending contracts. Citizen departmental requests, we have a treasurer's request for approval of bonds, permanent borrowing in the amount of two million nine hundred and forty-five dollars for various projects for Watercom, Water Company, Skonset Water Company Airport, and Nobody or Plane Fields. And we have a motion here in front of us, and Tobias has graciously agreed to take a crack at it, so it's all yours, Tobias.
So in the effort of expediency, I would move that in order to reduce the interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time, from time to time pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section one A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund the town twenty-eight million four hundred and sixty-five thousand, general obligation bonds dated November twenty fif-
Fifteen.
No, dated November fifteenth, two thousand and five, maturing on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, and July fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Together, the refundable bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall, vote shall be used to pay principal redemption, premium, and interest on the refunded bonds and the cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further move that the sale of the three million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand general obligation refunding bond, Series A, of the town dated October twenty-second, twenty fifteen, the Series A bonds, to Morgan Stanley and Company, L.L.C., at the price of four million fifty-five thousand thirteen dollars and seventeen cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on July fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts of the, and bear interest at the respective rates. Further move that the sale of the two million nine hundred thousand thirty-two thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of twenty-fifteen bonds, Series B, of the town dated October twenty-second, twenty fifteen, the Series B bonds, and together with the Series A bonds, the bonds, for the Robert W. Briard and Company, Inc., at the price of three million fifty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable to, on October fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates. Further move that the bonds maturing on October fifteenth, twenty thirty, and October fifteenth, twenty thirty-five shall subject, shall be subject to mandatory redemption. Further move that in connection with the markings of sales and bonds, and the preparation and distribution of notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated October second, twenty fifteen, and a final official statement dated October eighth, twenty fifteen, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby be ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Further move that the Series B bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town's, such terms and conditions are to be set forth in the official statement. Further move to authorize the extension and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated October twenty-second, twenty fifteen, between the town and Nantucket and the U.S. Bank National Association of Refunding Escrow Agent. Further move that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with S.E.C. Rule fifteen C. two dash twelve, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by the reference in bonds for the benefit of holders of the bonds from time to time. Further move that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to remove and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain this tax-exempt status of the bonds. Further move that each member of the Board of Selectmen, town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, execute and deliver such certificate receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them, and any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Do I have a second?
I have a couple of friendly amendments. On the first motion, it's twenty-one A., and on the third one, it's three million fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine, not fifty-three. And then the last one is furthermore to authorize the execution and delivery of the refunding escrow agreement to be dated October twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, between the town and the U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent. And then I'll second it for you. Sounds good? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Were you saving some money, Deb?
We're saving a hundred and one thousand, it's a budgetary savings of a hundred and one thousand over the next two years.
Hundred and one thousand over the next two years, since she didn't go to the mics, so everyone at home knows. Thank you, Deb. All right. That takes care of that item. The next is the workshop. Discussion regarding new Highline vessel and potential impact on infrastructure, including increase in traffic, review of possible improvements to, in the straight wharf area. Okay. I know that the Highline people are here. Why don't we, we have some things in our packet. I know we, we approved this maybe a little over a year ago, the new ferry, and we just want to kind of get an idea of what, what kind of increase we're gonna see here, and what we've been, the town has been looking at the straight wharf, Lower Main Street connection for a while here, and trying to figure out ways to improve the flow of people on and off of straight wharf, and the traffic flow through there. And the reality is, is that straight wharf has become the hub of Nantucket now, not, not the airport anymore, so I thought it would be good to put this on the workshop now, before the new boat arrives in April, and all of a sudden everybody's going, oh my God, what have we done? So at least this will give us the winter to maybe make some improvements. So if, if you guys wanted to come up, whichever one first, and identify yourself, and just tell us a little bit about the impacts versus the old slow ferry and the old slow boat and the new fast ferry, how many, how many more, I know there are gonna be some new trips, or how many more people per trip, that kind of thing, so.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Maurice Scudder. I'm one of the owners of Highline Cruises. I'm here with my brother Philip, and our on-island manager, Liz Holland. Part of your packets, did you have a copy of the proposed schedule of operation? I wasn't sure if that had-
No, we didn't get that.
Okay. Cause I know that-
Yes, absolutely. Eric, I'll make sure you get my copy for the record.
In regard to the schedule, just to backtrack a little bit here, what, what we did, and what you did, help us, and we thank you very much in that approvals last year, was during the summer months, we currently, or at that time, we instill now this year, made nine round trips per day. Six with the high-speed ferry Gray Lady with a three-hundred capacity, three with the, we call, traditional ferry Great Point, which has an eight-hundred passenger capacity. We will be retiring Great Point and continuing to operate nine round trips a day during the busiest peak season. Right now, five are scheduled to be operated with what the new ferry, which is Gray Lady Four, after great debate internally and looking at many various names, we said we cannot give up the Gray Lady name. It's our brand, so we, we are bringing on Gray Lady Four, and the current Gray Lady will be making four round trips a day in the summer, so there'll still be nine round trips. Now, Gray Lady Four will have a capacity of four hundred and ninety-three people. Of course, that's not all interior, not all exterior, so depending upon the time of the year, we manage though, all these capacities, depending upon weather and things, but, and I think, what we feel is gonna happen is we are not gonna have trips which now kind of back up to each other with a traditional ferry and a high-speed ferry in the docks at the same time. These are just, there'll be gaps between each of these departures, which I think will spread out. We don't know exactly how our ridership is gonna spread out. We feel it is gonna spread out as opposed to be forced into one particular time of day or area. There still will be certainly busy times of the day. There's no, nothing around that. It's a busy time of year and lots of people coming. But we think that with expanded turnaround times, separation of scheduled departures and arrivals, we, we feel it's gonna improve the flow of traffic on straight wharf as opposed to make it more congested. Right now, at times on the busy holidays, we have eight-hundred passengers getting off Gray Lady, I mean, excuse me, Great Point, and a ton coming over on, you know, Gray Lady all the time anyway, but, so again, we just think it's gonna spread out and, and improve that aspect of the arrivals and departures. We have been in communications already on these infrastructure issues with Mr. Frederick Sierra and the other stakeholders around that waterfront, so we are aware of being helpful however we can with our operation on improvements that can be made, not only with our operation, but with the surrounding of Butters, to make things work a little more smoothly. And I'd be happy if there's any other specific questions about our departures and arrivals and anything like that with the schedule, you know, to answer. We don't anticipate our ridership. We are not, we have not budgeted for an increase in ridership. We're gonna, seventy thousand people now travel on Great Point. We will not take any more of those seventy thousand people, if they're, you know, traditional ferry people won't be getting off on straight wharf, because we won't have traditional ferry service. It's gonna be all high speed. Now, do we end up replacing them with seventy thousand more high-speed people, sixty thousand, eighty-five thousand? We don't know yet, but, you know, we'll all find out soon, kind of where the preferences are, and how, how the, it is spread out throughout the season and year.
Questions? Not yet, okay.
Bob, could you just read the schedule, cause some of us don't have that?
Yeah. So, twenty sixteen, from January first to May twenty-second, and I'm assuming it's gonna be one of the other boats, that's why it's GL and GL Four?
Right. Pick, pick me up, right.
Okay. So the, the first boat will depart the Highline dock at six fifteen, arrive Nantucket seven fifteen. First boat will depart Nantucket seven forty, arrive in Hyannis at eight forty. Then the boat will depart Hyannis at nine oh five, arrive Nantucket at ten oh five. Depart ten thirty, Nantucket, arrive Hyannis eleven thirty. Depart Hyannis at noon, arrive in Nantucket at one. Depart Nantucket at one twenty-five, and arrive in Hyannis at two thirty, two twenty-five. Depart Hyannis at three ten, arrive in Hyannis at four ten. Depart Nantucket at four forty, arrive in Hyannis at five forty. And then depart Hyannis at seven P.M., arrive in Nantucket at eight P.M., depart Nantucket at eight twenty, and arrive in Hyannis at eight twenty. So this is basically the exact same schedule we have now, it's just gonna be a matter of which boat it's gonna be. The summer schedule, May twenty-third, oh, I should note in here that the schedule is supplemented with additional departures for Daffodil Weekend, which is four twenty-nine through five one, and Wine Festival Weekend, five twenty through five twenty-two.
Which the current schedule is also.
Right, correct. So really, it doesn't change, the schedule doesn't change except for the boat capacity.
There are some very tweaked differences, yeah.
Okay. Then the summer schedule will be five twenty-three to six ten. Well, this is, I guess, the spring schedule, excuse me. Depart Hyannis, I think I'm just gonna read the departure times. Depart Hyannis at six fifteen, eight thirty, nine thirty, eleven fifteen, twelve thirty-five, two twenty, four ten, five forty, and eight o'clock. Depart Nantucket, seven forty-five, nine fifty-five, eleven o'clock, twelve forty-five, two fifteen, four fifteen, five forty-five, seven P.M., and nine twenty P.M. Then the summer schedule, from six eleven to nine five, will be depart Hyannis, six fifteen, eight thirty, nine thirty, eleven fifteen, twelve thirty-five, two twenty, four ten, five forty, and eight P.M. Depart Nantucket, seven forty-five, nine fifty-five, eleven A.M., twelve forty-five P.M., two fifteen, four fifteen, five forty-five, seven P.M., and nine twenty P.M. And then, in the fall-
It's basically, Bobby, it's the same schedule, and then just taking Saturdays and Sundays out on that eight thirty and nine fifty-five.
Right. And then we go back. So September, the boat, the last boat from Hyannis will leave at eight o'clock. This is September sixth through ten-ten, and the last boat will leave Nantucket at nine twenty. And then after Columbus Day Weekend, we go back to our, our five-boat schedule, which is what we all have now in the winter. So that last boat actually leaves, there's a three-ten on Hyannis, and then the next one is at seven o'clock to accommodate for the sports teams and different things, and give people a chance to spend the full day on the mainland and get home later, and not have to leave at six o'clock, so. Any questions on the schedule? No? Okay. So, I guess, Mike, right now, when the high-speed arrives, we have approximately, when it's completely full, three hundred people getting off?
Yeah, approximately.
Yeah. And so now we're gonna go to four ninety-three, if, if the new ferry is completely full?
Yeah, if we find the comfort level is adequate at that, or it may be reduced-
Worst-case scenario, we're gonna have four ninety-
Worst-case scenario, four ninety-three.
Mike, the reason I wanted to have this meeting, cause I just, you, you know that I have one of the charter boats in the marina, so I, I see this firsthand, and I'm, I think a lot of this will be alleviated by the fact that we won't have the high-speed and the slow-speed dumping there at the exact same time. But we do also have the freedom that dumps in there, pretty much, pretty close to it. So there's a lot of people. And then just with the bottleneck that's there, with the buses on the wharf, the traffic pattern that, as it comes around through the, through the stop-and-shop parking lot, and around the corner, you know, Dave and I have had several conversations about this. I know some of the other members have had conversations with Dave about, there's a, you know, the sidewalk on straight wharf, or lower main, whatever you wanna call it, from the gazebo up to the club car, is so narrow and so busted up from tree roots and such, that if you have a suitcase with wheels, or a roller, or a stroller, or a wheelchair, God forbid, you can't get uptown. So the cabs have to come to straight wharf, and there's no, there's not adequate parking for cabs there, and then they, they double park in the road, and then if there's a truck coming, or anybody coming, traffic gridlocks back. You know, I, I thought it would be good to start having a conversation about this, to see if there's something that we could do to rectify this, or something that N.I.R. could do on the wharf, you know, the, the corner there where the gate is now, where that tree is, if they could open that back. And I've talked to several of the individuals at N.I.R. about making the, the wooden docks more accessible to the center of the wharf. You know, you come up, I see people all the time come up with a suitcase, and they're on wheels or a stroller, and then they have to traverse down a four-inch step, onto Belgian blocks, and then a curb, and it, it just, it's, it's, it's dangerous, and it just, it isn't, it isn't cohesive for the, what's really happening there anymore. The other question I had for you, Mr. Scudder, is the buses create a pretty big bottleneck there, and, you know, the, the buses really service the traditional ferries. And now that you're losing the traditional ferries, do you think you're gonna lose that, that core group that comes to Nantucket for the day, gets on the buses and takes a tour? Or are you planning to still have five or six buses in the middle of all that with twice, because you're gonna have more luggage compartments now, and all that, so.
Sure, yeah. Well, there's no question that the, the bus business has been evolving over the years. In fact, ridership declining considerably over the years, as day tripping has changed to the island. We, our intentions are to certainly continue providing some type of bus service. That's a challenge that we're facing now, and exactly figuring out how best to model that. We are prepared to, and have been in discussions with our landlord, on relocating those buses, whatever that form of business takes, to alleviate congestion on the island. I think we're both cooperatively on, of the same mindset to make that happen, recognizing that it would be a, a big help to flow on and off the dock. And I do think it's a necessary, or a good service for the island. I think it has to be kind of tweaked, and looked at, and improved, and both on its service and its location, and I think that will happen. I don't know exactly when, I'm not the only player in that-
Right.
Dave's gonna work closely, I think, with both our landlord and ourselves to make that happen.
And the last question I had is, can you give us a little bit of an idea of what the, the, yeah, the gangplank structure's gonna look like? Is it gonna be substantially larger, or?
It, it will be substantially larger in some respects, because of the requirements of ADA accessibility. The, the bad news is, it's probably gonna, the footprint probably will be a bit larger. The good news is it's gonna eliminate many of the elevations now, which are not conducive to as efficient tra, egress and access on and off the boats. I think it'll improve luggage flow. We are also looking at improving luggage flow, where we take inbound luggage in, where we move outbound luggage to. I think that in conjunction with a opened-up turnaround timeframe, where it's not all being, trying to be done in twenty minutes, it'll be over thirty-five minutes, twenty-five minutes, forty minutes, it depends upon the departure times. I think that'll help significantly. But the actual structure, whether, you know, I'm not sure until it shows up where, exactly where we, we'll find locations to, you know, utilize, to put a few carts here, or bikes here, or there, passengers here, but it will in general take up a, more of a footprint in the central area of the dock, which is open now, but it's also gonna alleviate some of that footprint to the east side of where we currently have structures. That'll be clearer. So overall, though, I'd have to say it probably will be a little, a, a larger footprint.
Will it service both boats?
Yes, it'll service everything that comes in and out with transitions and stuff that are quite, you know, not necessarily all twelve to one at all times, but very good at all tides.
Just a question on, do you anticipate the, the Gray Lady Four running more often in the wintertime, or is it gonna be kind of an evaluation between what, what times you're gonna, you filled up your fast boats in the past, you're gonna be running one boat versus another boat? How are you gonna be managing that? Just some of your thoughts?
Yeah, I think my, our thoughts is generally, we'll, we'll want our, our nicest and best vessel out there as much as we can, both from a comfort level, a sea-keeping level, but there may come times when it makes more sense to have, you know, Gray Lady, the current vessel, on, on service too. The nice thing is we have two vessels, which will be able to be, interact, exchange with each other well now, which is, can be problematic now with the two current high-speed vessels. For the most part, though, I would say Gray, the, the new vessel, Gray Lady Four, will be in service for a good portion of the, of the winter, but there'll be times when we have to also take her offline. I think we anticipate now, I'd have to go back, I didn't bring those notes with me, but I would say we may have something like nine to ten months of service with one vessel, and seven to eight months of service with the other, trying to get enough time to do proper maintenance and improvements to each of the boats.
That's great. The, you know, I'm assuming that the new boat is, because of its size, and it's gonna be more of a sea boat, then be able to take a little bit more weather than the other boat, I mean, not much more, but, you know, one of the, one of the frustrations of living here all winter long is, it's, in the winters, when we all get to go on vacation and relax. Just like yourself, you don't get too many days off in July and August, so-
Right.
-when the weather gets crappy, and the boats get canceled, and, or the big boat gets taken offline for maintenance for three or four weeks, and you have to cancel it a, a lot, this will help to alleviate that, because obviously, this is gonna put the regular boat now as the little boat-
Sure, right.
But it, it's very frustrating for our year-round population, who sort of rely on you as their way to get to the real world, so.
No, I recognize that, and we've gone to great expense, not only with the, the current Gray Lady, but with this one too, you know, with ride control, and do the best you can with, it is a boat, and it is gonna be on the water in the wintertime, but it'll, it'll be certainly no less comfortable than even Gray Lady is now.
Well, we're not so much worried about the comfort. We're used to getting banged around, we just wanna go.
You wanna go.
Yeah.
Well, ultimately, that's the captain's decision, not mine.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I grew up here in the sixties, when the steamship went and friggin' anything, so, you know.
Yeah. But, you know, I think, I think we're our own worst enemy, in that between our, you know, Ayano and the Gray Lady, I mean, there was a time, believe it or not, when Gray Lady Two, or Lady Martha, was perceived as a wonderful way to get back and forth to Nantucket. Now, I've been told by numbers, some of them in this room, that it is no longer appropriate for travel back and forth to Nantucket, but it'll be very comfortable, and we'll be out there certainly. I think we have like a ninety-eight percent trip, operation on our schedule. It's a very high, unless you get some winters like we had last winter.
Yeah. Just to understand this a little more, what, what are the percentage of boats currently that are, are full?
Oh, boy. I, don't quote me on that, because, and, and full is a, you know, there are times, honestly, when we have reservations full, and then seventy-five commuters, if you're any commuters in here, if you call us up and let us know that you're not going, it's always helpful. But we'll have a bunch of people that don't show up, and that full boat goes out with forty less people, so. In the summer, July and August, a high percentage of our departures will, would be, I would say, eighty to a hundred percent full.
Well, in season weekends.
Right. So I, I guess, just what, what that gets to, to me, what that says to me is that I think we're gonna have a little more increased traffic, even though we're, we're having less numbers from the larger boats, it seems like we might have more folks consistently at a little higher numbers, which will give us greater numbers overall of folks coming to the end. That would just be my opinion.
Could happen.
It could, and, and honestly, if I had the crystal ball and knew, I don't, I don't know. Certainly, some don't go with us, because they either can't get a reservation, and they, and then they're on a traditional ferry, which will now be somewhere else, but generally, if somebody didn't go high-speed with us, it's oftentimes that they just leave, and they'll go to Ayano, or fly, or do something else, and not, not a ton of the percentage of people would go from- of the percentage of people would go from the, that's the way they want to go. If they don't, if the high speed boat's not available, they're not going to, you know, tourist is a little bit different, but a lot of the high speed travel are high speed people. And we expect that a lot of our traditional service is going to go elsewhere and that we will take more highs. There's no question, more high speed people will be getting off on Straight Wharf. Now, whether more people totally are getting off on Straight Wharf, I don't know.
Don?
Um, you mentioned some improvements that you might be making to how the luggage is handled. Can you detail that a little bit more?
Sure. Well, I think one of the major improvements right out of the gate is longer turnaround times and not, and not the requirement of the helter-skelter pace, which we have to get the number of carts on and off. And we are also looking at, rather than have, have everything staged predominantly is far up towards our, um, terminal, um, not the ticket office area, but, um, where inbound and outbound luggage stretches out in that area. We're going to, um, be, uh, testing the possibilities of having, um, more outbound luggage being taken and put. There's a parking area to the left of our office and that area is going to be, um, is being considered for dedication to handling outbound luggage, inbound, some inbound carts, different things like that. So the flow would go up and down the, uh, Straight Wharf, but, uh, maybe create less congestion right on that thorough fare along the wharf.
I don't know if you've ever thought of having some additional assistance because it's very hard if, say you're a mom traveling with a stroller to eat, any way to get your bags and get them down to like a cab stand.
Sure.
Because the, the distance is so great. I think it will help to move it-
Yeah.
-past your office, but I don't-
I would rely. I mean, obviously Liz does a wonderful job doing, you know, helping with all these things. And we're going to work with her and identify what resources she feels would be helpful in that regard and, uh, provide as much as we can for her.
Well, you know, you, what you hit on the nail there is my concern and, um, you know, I've discussed this with Dave and one of the things is, we talked about, um, was taking the, the, um, building side of Straight, of Lower Main Street where backyard barbecue and all the shops are. Extending that sidewalk out two feet so that you could traverse on either side of the trees, leveling the sidewalk, making it a nice smooth sidewalk up to the club car. And then I, one of the things that I suggested to Dave is maybe moving the parking to the other side of Straight Wharf, up against the sidewalk on, on, uh-
Parking lot side.
On the parking lot side. That'll also open up that corner for when a vehicle comes in or a truck to turn and make this traverse straight up the sidewalk. It'll also give people a chance to realize that there are cabs up the road and not when they look up the road, see the backs of cars and not realize that there's a cab stand there. So, and the cabs could go on the other side of the road. And then also they could continue up Main Street and, and traverse, you know, according to wherever they wanted to go. Because a lot of people there don't take a cab or, or a bus. They're staying in town and they just, they walk off or stroll off with their luggage and go to the guest house. It's, you know, they're told and they, and they're staying in town for a reason. They want to walk. They don't want to bring a car to them, you know? So it, um, we need to make it a little more efficient to get up and off of, uh, off that wharf as smoothly as possible. It's something I don't know if we can, we need to discuss a little more as a board and probably put something in the queue for sidewalk improvements. Maybe look at some of our Chapter 90 money or whatever other sources we have. But, you know, we've been talking about doing sidewalks improvements for a while and I, I think this is one that we really need to get on sooner than later because, you know, it, we all see it. It's, it's where the bulk of the traffic is, you know, so. Any other questions for Mr. Scudder?
Well, it sounds, you know, I think it's important that every, you know, it's kind of a new change, big transportation changes or have effects on economies. And I think it's important for everybody to be aware of that. Um, and I'm excited about the slightly earlier departures. Makes it easier for folks to get up to Boston, so.
Great. Yeah, and we were very appreciative. I mean, we, uh, we're catching up too. There's been, it's been a bit, you know, it's been a three or four year ride here for the, us in terms of just, um, trying to play a little bit of catch-up with, um, impacts on our infrastructures in Hyannis and Nantucket. And we're looking forward to working with you and helping that happen.
Well, we're going to be talking about a little bit of that next, so.
Okay.
Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add to this as far as what you think the town should possibly do to alleviate this traffic congestion? Or do you want to tackle that a little later on?
I, I think it's part of a bigger plan. I think that, um, Mike Burns and his group is doing a lot of things with sidewalk improvements, um, as you pointed out, with a lot of the ideas that have been talked about. And I think at some point maybe Mike could argue could have another workshop solely on all of those improvements brought into, to one location. I think it would be a, a better conversation to see it as a whole.
That sounds great. So, you know, Andrew, I'll talk to you and Mike about that. And when he's ready, we'll, we'll port, put it into the queue over the winter. But, um, you know, that, we're going to have a new ferry in April, so we'll be able to, uh, we'll see what the, what the issues will be and hopefully they won't be too bad. So, thank you. All right. The next item is a discussion regarding the Fast Ferry Connector funding. All right. So Libby, you want to start?
Sure. Um, just to refresh everybody's memory, this, the Fast Ferry Connector is an idea that came up quite late in the game, um, a couple of fiscal years ago. And what wasn't really discussed in detail at the time was if it was a successful venture, how would we fund it going forward? So it seems to be successful. And I think we're at the point now where we need to figure out what the funding is going to be going forward. Paula's going to take you through some of the numbers. Brian's going to take us through the numbers of the ferry embarkation fee, which I, although I've said it several times, maybe, maybe many would be a word I'd rather use. The, the ferry embarkation fee right now, right from inception, has been dedicated to the Community Service Officer Program that the, the town has. It doesn't even fully fund that. The rest of it is made up for in the police department budget. So it, there's been a lot of suggestions, repeated suggestions, that we use the ferry embarkation fee to fund the Fast Ferry Connector, which is fine, except we all need to understand then that we're going to have to locate money in the general fund to then fund the Community Service Officer Program, which means cutting something or using additional funds out of the budget. So that's something to keep in mind as we have this discussion. And what else did I want to say about it? We, there, there are some, some sort of minor revenue, um, ideas. One of them would be to add a fare to the service, which this is the second year of the service. We have not so far charged a fare. Another idea that's come up is to charge for parking at the lot over here, maybe through some kind of a pass. Um, we've, we've talked about different paid parking options ranging from, um, an airport-like system to just a pass system. The airport-like system would be problematic to manage. We'd have to really go through how that would function and work and be dealt with in off-hours. So I think Paula can take, take you through and we can go through the ferry numbers and go from there.
Um, as everyone knows, the service began in 2014 because of some complaint, complaints that were received about the large commercial vehicles parking in the downtown area and that stop and, and at the Stop and Shop Lot. And decided to try a park and ride service to the boats. And it has been largely funded for, in 2014 and 2015. Um, just very quickly, that was the service in 2014 with the days of operation, um, just before Memorial Day through Columbus Day from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The first year we incorporated it into the airport route from the beginning of the bus season through Labor Day. And then after that, we tried to service, um, just the lot with one bus and found that to be ineffective. 6,228 passenger boardings in 2014. Parking was free, no fare was charged, and a survey that was done at the end of the season had highly positive feedback about the service. In 2015, the same time span of service was operated. However, the service was operated until 10:00 PM, uh, in order to meet the, the last fast ferries, which was something that we heard from the surveys that people weren't able to do the year before. They couldn't get back if they were coming on the late boat to their car, so they weren't using the service. So this was a, a benefit to that. Um, we only incorporated it into the airport route from mid-June through Labor Day. And the rest of the time, we used two buses from the park and ride lot to the boats on a 20-minute schedule. And that proved to be very effective and very efficient. As of September 30th, almost 9,000 riders, which was, is a, is a huge increase. And what we're seeing in that is, um, not just a contractor boat times, but we're seeing , uh, more use from the park and ride lot in the morning to the first boats and more use throughout the day. Parking was free, no fare was charged. And again, with the surveys, there was very positive feedback for the service. The 2015 survey results are still being calculated and a report will be issued sometime in the next few weeks. But, um, just some sample results. Um, you see the percentages of people surveyed that used the service in 2014. And then... The same question for 2015. And there's an increase in use in each of those target audiences. Another question that was asked was what aspects of the Wave Ferry Connector do you like the best? Um, 32% liked the convenience of not driving downtown to access ferries. 30% liked the free parking and 26% um, liked the easy access to the park and ride lot from the boats. The next slide just shows, um, the contributions made. As I said, right now, it has been largely privately funded. Um, 80, 80 to 90% privately funded. With the town contributing, uh, 25,000 each year. Okay. This is just a breakdown of the cost. Um, in 2014, it, it turned out to be 59.26 an hour. I have not, I don't have a, um, actual cost per hour for 2015 yet. It will probably be a little bit less than that 65 an hour. And 2016, if all things remain the same, cost would be about $250,000. And that's just a breakdown of what the hourly rate, um, entails.
Paula's making me do this part. So what we're hoping to at least get some direction on tonight is are we going to continue the service going forward? How are we going to fund it? What should the town contribution be? We do have some potential funding sources, like we, as we mentioned, some charging for fares. Um, are the continuing, are the outside contributions going to continue? We know of at least one that is unlikely. Um, and another option would be we have someone else do this program. Or perhaps we rent out the lot or lease out the lot or RFP the lot and say to one or the other boat lines or even somebody else, here's the lot you run a service from the lot to the boats. The next slide has to do with the embarkation numbers, which Brian can take you through.
So the top line is just the revenue that we have received, excuse me, annually through, uh, from 2011 to 2016. 2016 is through, was through the end of September for the revenue received. Then we have compiled all the expenses for the CSO program, um, in its entirety, starting at 220,000 in 2011. Uh, in 2015, the last full year being 351,000. Then we've out, we've shown what the allocation is. At the annual town meeting, we vote the amount or the limit to be spent from the ferry embarkation fee. Uh, the first few years, it was 150,000. At the last town meeting for 2016, we appropriated or authorized 190,117. So the, just using the 2011, the 220 was the full cost. That meant that we had to transfer to the general fund, uh, at year end, approximately $70,987 worth of costs from the CSO program into, which is absorbed through the police budget. And obviously this year, we threw, end of September, we had spent 152,000, uh, that had been charged to the ferry embarkation fee account. So, uh, May and June will more than likely require another transfer into the general fund.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The ferry embarkation fee is 50 cents a ticket. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
And at present, we don't collect it on commuter books, correct?
That's my understanding correct.
The, the legislation specifically does not allow that.
Well, 90% of the people that use this bus purchase commuter books, if not more. So it seems to me that we need to go back to the legislation and ask for the 50 cents on commuter books. And then we could fund this and we wouldn't have to ask for any contributions. Otherwise, I don't know how we're going to continue to fund it. I mean, it's a, it's a good thing, but we just don't have 250,000 laying around. And, you know, we can charge $2 a head for the tickets on the, on the bus, $2 a ride. What's that going to bring in Paula? $16,000. And we can charge $500 per car that parks in the lot for a seasonal pass that isn't a Nantucket vehicle. That's another maybe $20,000 at most. And that still brings us up about $240,000 short. So, or $210,000 short. So, you know, I mean, the other option is, is we just say, sorry, figure it out, you know? I, I, there's no, there's no magic bullet here. We would have already used it.
Just, it would be helpful for me, Bobby. I know going off island, um, taking the steamship, there is a fare, there is a bus that takes you to the steamship's parking lot. It would be nice, I know we have one of our reps here, to hear a little bit about how that shuttle is funded.
Mr. Randy, you're up. That's, I believe it's funded directly by the steamship authority, correct?
Well, I was hoping that I wouldn't have to speak tonight because last time I did, the whole room was asleep. But, um, no, the, the parking, the shuttle that you're talking about is funded through, um, our customers who pay the, a parking permit at the parking lot. So it's, it's part of our budget. Um, but we don't specifically charge. If you get off the boat onto the bus, you're not charged at that point.
So it's, it's paid through the purchasing of a, of a, of a parking spot?
You charge a daily rate?
Well, yes, we, we do it just a couple of different ways. We charge a daily rate. We also charge, um, a year, you can buy a yearly parking permit for, you know, $600 or something. And that, all that money goes into operating the parking lots, which the buses are included in that.
And how many cars does that lot hold?
Uh, we have a couple of different ones. I don't know the exact total, but it's probably, um, on the order of, you know, I don't know, a thousand cars, something like that.
Ours holds 75?
No, more, probably, yeah, I was going to say-
Less than 100, though.
Depending on how they, right.
I have a question for Rob. Is, is the, is it self-funded though if you include the cost of purchasing of renting the lots? Or is it just, does, does, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Or is that a bond or something that's paid separately?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't believe that it is self-sustaining in that respect. Um, I, I don't know that it could be.
And, and that, that's sort of my point is, is these lots themselves, it's one thing to say, geez, that, that's paying for it, but it isn't buying the land. It's really expensive on a parking lot.
Right. And we have to pay the attendants, we have to pay the drivers, we have to pay fuel for the buses and, and, you know, everything else that goes along with that, so.
But that, those expenses are covered through the, the income purchase, produced from the lots?
For the most part. There is some that is kicked in with the normal budget, uh, from the steamship, but, uh-
My point though is if they have to buy the lot or rent the lot, that's a, that's off that item. So it's, the, so a lot itself isn't making money if you actually have to buy the lot and pay on it for it.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we are looking at other options in Hyannis because we don't have the capacity now, um, for some of the busier weekends. So it's, it's an ongoing problem.
This thing all started, I mean, everyone's well aware of this, but just in case nobody is at home, this started when we got, we got numerous complaints from residents and shop owners alike about the continued parking of commercial vehicles all over the side streets and in front of businesses. all over the side streets and in front of businesses all day or all night while people took the boat. And then it wasn't just the commercial vehicles. It was go try to get into the AMP or the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot on a Saturday when there's a hockey game in Hyannis, and you, there's, you know, every, every space is filled with a hockey mom's car. So we put the bus in place, at least for the summer, and the numbers don't lie. I mean, a lot of residents and seasonal residents use the lot. Like you said, Tobias, if you're going to go off-island for the day, you're good for now. And you want to get down there and park, there's no place to park. Unless you get to the town lot by seven, seven o'clock in the morning, you're not going to get a space. And if you park anywhere else, you're going to get a ticket. So the, the option is to take the, the boat. Just, the difficult part here is, is how do we come up with a quarter million dollars to pay for it? Got any suggestions? Chief, you got your hand up? Chief's got his hand up back there, so let's, maybe he's got the answer.
I wished I had the answer. No, but, but we, after last week's discussion about the permits for the lot and stuff, we've had conversations with our staff about how we can do this, trying to come up with some ideas for you. And to be honest with you, the conversation continually came back to this lot over here is a perfect lot to put in a park, a paid parking kiosk. And whoever uses it, for whatever reason, whether they're a commercial, whether they're a resident going on vacation for the winter, they, they park their car there, they pay to park their car there using this kiosk. So after this discussion, I went out, I had the opportunity this last weekend to look at two different systems personally. One was a system that had numbers on the street for parking spaces, or in the parking lot for parking spaces. You just put your number in the, in the machine, and it charged you, and you put how many days you want or how many hours you want, and it charged you appropriately. The other one was that you just put in the little machine, it's about this wide, this deep, this tall, and you put in the time you want to be there, and then your credit card, and it charges you, it prints out a ticket. You put the ticket in your windshield, and you leave for the month, but you've paid for it. And then the enforcement people just go around and, and look at the tickets and write tickets for those that can't read the tickets or whatever. It seems to me the perfect location to try that type of thing on the island, because if a resident is parking there, they're doing it in lieu of another alternative, like a cab or the bus. So they're making a conscious choice to take advantage of the free town parking. Let's not make it free. Let's make them consider all the options. All of them are going to cost them something, so resident or non-resident.
What about the system that the airport has? Where you, you push the button, get the token, and then you put the token in, and it tells how long you've been there?
Too many mechanical parts to run there. And, and you can see they constantly have trouble with the gates going bad, with, you know, people putting tokens in. It quite frankly is quite a difficult and cumbersome system.
I got caught with a $7,000 fee for In-N-Out one day once, Bobby.
Seven thousand?
No, I'm serious.
But these other systems I was talking about, for instance, our current rules allow up to seven days free parking in the lot. You can program them to allow that, so it gives them seven free days, and then they pay for any additional days, that kind of thing. So it gives you a lot of flexibility to do whatever you want. Where you get into trouble is when you try to differentiate one rate for non-residents, one rate for residents, because the machines can't figure that out. You need a human to make that decision. And that's what we want to try to get away from, is getting more humans involved.
Do you have any figures or numbers, Chief, on how many cars are in that lot on any given day?
Yep, this lot in the summer is pretty much full all the time. As a matter of fact, if we added probably 50 more spaces from somewhere, we'd probably fill them too. And, and I was one of the biggest skeptics at the beginning that that was going to be the case. I was proven wrong.
So would you say for 100 days, it's running at 90% capacity?
I think so, yeah.
Alright, so 190, say there's 90 spaces. Say you got 80 spaces times 90 days, $10 a car. That's getting us there.
And if you did, if you did the same thing at the town lot, you know, that's another story, but there's more revenue.
How much, did you get any figures on how much these systems are roughly?
We have those numbers, I don't have them. I didn't get, Libby, do you know?
I was just gonna say, this is all very interesting and very much worth the discussion, but we don't have the numbers right now, we don't have the backup for us. There's a whole other component philosophy about paid parking, and the farther out of where you're going, the cheaper it's supposed to be, the more expensive it's supposed to be, closer to where you want to go, it's a whole thing. I, I think maybe, if the board is so inclined, we designate the transportation planner to take a look at a couple of systems and, and get some numbers from the police and run out some projections, see just what it might bring in, what it might cost. There probably are some logistical things to figure out, like what's going to happen if somebody's trying to get in and out at 3 o'clock in the morning?
They're not, they're not gated. They're just, they just go in, in and out.
So sometimes when people pay to park, they think they have some security, level of security in the lot, and they're just, there's a lot to this. I, I very much like the idea of paid parking out here and elsewhere. The town lot downtown would be a great place for paid parking as well. And that could pay for other services. But so far, we haven't really gone there. There probably needs to be some improvements to this lot if we're going to turn it into paid parking. Like, we're numbering spots, we have to have something to number them on, not dirt.
We don't have, I guess just, the, the main thought that comes into my mind, Bobby, is, and for something for us to think about, is what happens when we want to evolve on this site and build a new building here? Do we want to permanently have a parking spot here into the future? There are other spots that we could enact a similar policy at. You know, we talked a little about the school, but that didn't work out for various reasons, and where we're going to be at in time. I think, in my mind, it might be useful to hear back from Paula in what, I think paid parking is something that the community should be investing in, in some capacity. And I think, you know, either the town lot is a good spot, out here is a good spot. You know, we have more space back here. If we wanted to open up some more space and improve some of the parking, that doesn't mean we pave it, but there's hard pack and other options to make it a little nicer. I think we could try some of those options. I'm hoping some of our funding partners are still engaged in funding a portion of this. I, I understand they may not be willing to fund at the level they have been, but I would be hopeful that the Steamship Authority and the High Line, being cognizant of the fact that we're going to be providing a service to them, would still like to engage in some level of funding of this program. And I think, you know, with the paid parking element of it, if that works, and a little private contribution in the mix, and then that might get it funded. I don't think, however, going back to the state and talking about a reallocation of the embarkation fee is going to be very successful. I think there's not a lot of appetite at the state for new taxes, so to speak. And that might take a longer time than anticipated to get a project off the ground, and I don't think we have that time to really do it.
Paula, when do we need to have funding in place to run this for 2016?
Well, we would need to know, you know, January-ish. Depending on the discussions tonight, the work, ferry work group, we'll get back together and see what their commitments are. But just some things to think about. Maybe not the town paying for the entire thing, if there is the appetite of the private providers to still contin, to continue to provide funding at some type of level, probably less than what they're doing now. And there, we could look at cost savings. Does it really need to run to Columbus Day? Could it only run until Labor Day? Although that gets into the town parking regulations and changes in, in that thing, and those types of things. But it's something that we could look at.
I think it's, I think it's a valuable, I think it's a valuable service that we need to keep. I think we need to keep an RTA running it. I, I don't think we should be outsourcing it right now. You know, I think, I would like to see Stop &amp; Shop. I think they're a big beneficiary here. I'd like to see them back in the mix if we're going to be trying to get some funding or NIR, whoever. They're, they're a huge component. If there's no, if cars are in their lot, they're not doing any business. So I think that they, you know, whoever's downtown, they should be part, part of the mix again. And, you know, from the paid parking discussion, you know, Libby's exactly right. You shouldn't be charging for the furthest places and then having people park all day downtown. You know, if we're going to actually do this, then the board has to have an appetite to solve the paid parking downtown. I don't think, you can't, if you have two paid lots out here, people are going to just take their chances downtown, and the enforcement will have to be year-round, and it'll, it'll cost us more to enforce downtown than it'll be, than we'll get from the lot. So you have to really, you know, the most, the most convenient places should be charged, you should be charged. The furthest away should be cheaper. So from a, you know, standpoint, I think, you know, if we're going to do this, we need to start thinking about heading in that direction. We could start with these two lots, but eventually we need to actually bite the bullet and figure that out. And in fairness to the residents who have their spaces, they leave their house and then their space is taken and they can't come back, there's a lot of issues that we have to put on the table downtown for parking. That's passed tonight, though, Paula?
I was just somewhat going to echo that, that it would have to be still a reasonable rate out here so that people would use the service. And it would kind of have to start with the price of "to valet park in town" and go on down as you get further away.
Well-
We'd have to look at all of that.
I, I'm just going to put my two cents in on paid parking. I, I would support some type of paid parking for this lot out here, because it's a commuter lot, and it's, it's used 59% by, I believe it's a commuter, travelers who don't live here, don't pay taxes here, come to work here in the morning, go back in the afternoon. I'm going to have a hard time supporting any paid parking in the town lot until, well, for a while. The people that park in that town lot during the day are the year-round workforce in Nantucket. They're already taxed to the max, and now we're going to tell them they got to pay $15 or $20 a day to go to work in the morning. A lot of them come to work before the bus runs, and they go home after the bus is done. So, you know, it's a discussion that we can have. I'm just telling you my personal belief on it.
I understand, but my, my point, Bobby, isn't necessarily to charging down there. I'm saying if you charge on-street, then you actually have an income stream, and you can build a garage that's free. You know, you could put, you could improve there. I mean, you've got to take steps somehow, and I think that's, that's the issue.
Well, we're, we're charging the people that work downtown every day, whether it be in a shop or a restaurant or on whatever. We want to charge them to pay for a commuter, a commuter parking lot and a commuter bus system for the person that doesn't, doesn't live here. That's, that's going to be the take in town, you know? The, the word on the street that I hear is, it's a great service, but let the people who are benefiting from it pay for it. So, you know, I think we need, we're, I, I'm personally committed to pay for some portion of this through town funding. I believe, you know, because we do have people that live here that use it, especially if you live here year-round and you want to go on the, on the boat in the summer. You know, it's, it's almost impossible to do. And then even if you do do it, you've got to schlep all that stuff over to the town lot, whatever you brought back with you. So it's difficult at best. So this is, it is a service, and I think we should pay for part of it. But we need to figure out some way for the people that are really benefiting from this to pay for their fair share. And those same people that come over here and work all day pay for parking, parking spaces in Hyannis and all that. They don't get their parking over there for free, so they're used to paying for it.
Well, it's $500 or $1,000 a year-
Depending on where you're parking.
-to parking a lot over there. But then the other issue, though, is the, is the boat lines, not to beat you guys up, but I will, is, you know, they provide parking on the other side. You know, they have parking lots and for their, you know, for their employees and for their customers. And over here, you know, we're, we're stuck, you know? So, so there is a fairness issue. What you do in Hyannis and what you do in Oak Bluffs and Woods Hole, what you do, you know, over there, we should be, you know, we've got, we, it used to be okay, Nantucket had plenty of land, it used to be okay to do it the way we did it, sort of let people park all day downtown, and, you know, we've gotten more crowded and we've gotten less space. And, you know, we, I don't even think we should be using this as a parking lot myself, because we need it for housing. So we're in a, you know, a tough situation, and I think we need to have continued help. I mean, that's, you know, it needs to be, we need to be treated as well as some of the places communities on the other side are treated in some ways.
You want to charge for downtown parking, charge for the hourly parking on the streets.
That's my point.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, that's my point.
The town lot I have an issue with.
I understand, but that, but that's my point, Bobby, is if you charge on the streets and you do it properly, then you, then you actually, you can have a free town lot, you can have a parking garage, you can have, you know, less expensive lots elsewhere. But if you make those expensive, all you're going to do is drive the problem into other areas.
Mr. Lo, I thought we were going to make it through the night.
Listen, after listening to this, I got to just throw in something to sort of end this somehow, on a happier note and a sort of logical note. You know, I had my first Capcom meeting this morning, and we're looking at a lot of money here. Spending millions on sewer, millions on a lot of things. And we're arguing about this little piddly amount of money and this embarkation fee. Are you sure? Why don't we, and I'm not a suit, but I'm sure we've got Brian's right there, my new favorite suit. Can't we find a way to take a certain amount of money for the police thing, the CSO thing, out of this embarkation fee and have a fixed amount? And the remaining part be for the, the shuttle? And the Stop &amp; Shop thing was a, a little blip this year, Matt. You, you picked up on that, you're right about that. I don't think that that's going to happen next year. And come up with the balance, and Paula's got this thing down now with the whole way it comes out. The first year was a guess. Now it's a little bit easier, I think, to figure out. I do think that we, it is $650 to park in a steamship lot, the Yarmouth Road one, the one that goes, you know, by the train, right? And, yeah, there's definitely a value, Matt, I do agree with that point. But over there, people are coming from miles in all different directions. You can't not have parking. Here, we're already here. You can get a friend, your neighbor to give you a ride to the boat. It's not the same as it is off-island, so that's different.
Yeah, but you know what? I'm not talking about everyone buying a parking space.
No, I, I-
What I'm talking about is the, if you go down to the Wash Street lot right now, because now it's free, there's, there's 50 commercial vehicles in that lot. They should be paying $650 a year to park there in the winter and out here in the summer.
I agree with that. That was my thing at the beginning of this. I knew that we would end up finding a way to isolate those off-island trucks. We all know who they are. I mean, everybody does. And get them to pay what we pay off-island to park a car of ours off-island, okay? So that's, I think we're all in the right direction. But this little thing here, I mean, jeez, I, I don't know. I mean, we got to find a way to fix this embarkation thing.
I agree with you. I think we can find some funding in the general fund somewhere. We can't fund it all, though, is what I'm saying.
No, and I don't think we should.
And, and to make, to, to echo Libby's point, this was a perfect example of, this was done last minute, we need to do this, with no long-term planning of how we're going to fund this. And now here we are in year three, and the original contributors are saying, oh, I don't plan on paying this forever. And now, guess what? It's fallen back in our lap to come up with the money. And I hate to disagree with you, but $250,000 may seem like a pittance to you, but-
I didn't say it's a pittance.
It's 250 here, it's 250 there.
I'm saying it looks like a pittance compared to what we've done.
Well, compared to 200 million in infrastructure improvements we have to do in the next 10 years, you're absolutely right. But we still, it's $250,000 that benefit 8,000 people, you know? It's a numbers thing.
I think slowly there'll be a way to charge to get the, the contribution part to drop a little bit, but to continue and have other sources that, from the workers, from, from even the users. And I don't think that the general public thinks that they're not supposed to park out here, by the way, to use this. I don't know if that was ever said. Is that true, Paula?
What, that they're not allowed to park here?
That we're not supposed to drive out here and park?
No, they're allowed to.
Go to the boat? I thought we were.
No, we are.
Okay.
Yeah, we never said that.
Something was said earlier about they're taking up the space of the trucks. I, I just want sure.
Well, the lot's got limited space.
No, no, I know that, I'm just saying, okay.
But, you know, I mean, you go into the Wash Street lot right now, I guarantee you, it's 7 o'clock at night, and there's 20 vehicles there at least, if not more. You know, I have to buy a, a year-round commercial sticker for my truck to park after midnight downtown, and it's 25 bucks. Why don't we sell them, mine's gold or blue this year, give them a yellow one and tell them it's 6:50?
I think we're, at the beginning-
And they can park here and here.
I think at the beginning, we were afraid that we would not, people wouldn't use it if we charged them. I think that now-
The idea was to build the service and prove the service.
And I think we've built it, fastly we thought. And I think that the, the off-island companies that are working here would be glad to pay 600 bucks a year, peanuts, to park, to park between here, as you said, Bob, that was your original idea, to park here and then there, and it's the same, you know?
One sticker for both lots, that one in the winter, this one in the summer.
And that's easier than me- And it, and that's easier than managing electric machines and, and things that don't work in, in the rain.
Yeah, I think they'd be happy to pay that, to be set on where they can park.
Thank you, Matt.
And if it raises twenty thousand dollars, that gets us ten percent of what we need.
Hey, ju, just so you know, we already, there was a four hundred dollar fee for them to park there. That's already in the rules, uh, for the off-island trucks.
And how many have we sold?
Uh, five.
And how?
And the, the other ones are taking fifty dollar tickets every night to park there. So, you know, you know, maybe, I, I suspect we're not charging enough for the permit, I guess.
Is that for Washington Street?
Yes.
Not for out-of-island?
And how many tickets are we writing a night, chief?
Um, that I couldn't tell you, off the top of my head.
We are going through there every night, though, and writing them?
Yep, yep. But you're gonna be surprised, a lot of those have on-island stickers, uh, addresses with commercial, on-island commercial stickers like yours. So, yeah, they started enforcing that, I think, right after, well, this Columbus Day.
Which then, when, raises the issue, if you can get, if you have a, if you've rented a, if you rented a house, you rented a room and you've got a, and you're on, and you're a resident and you're getting an on-island sticker, you're not really gonna get the money that you're hoping to raise, Bobby. You gotta find a way, you know, maybe to charge everybody.
What, Mr. Scudder?
Uh, great discussion. We certainly are not here to say that we're abandoning, we think it's a great program. We think it's worked wonderfully. I think we are certainly a stakeholder in it. I think the more stakeholders that step up and say, yes, this is a benefit to us, then I think that, the better. Um, the more avenues of funding we can find, the better. If, if we can do continued fund, though, I have to have one of my boats on the side of that graphic, though, Paula, and not just two pictures of Iano, so.
Oh, I did not do that, did I? Oh, my apologies, certainly not.
Uh, no, no, that's, I'm teasing, obviously. But, um, you know, I think, obviously, we're not gonna, this, we, has a great value to us and many other stakeholders. I hope all the others step up also and continue, but if it can be a, a, a program of trying to find other sources and reducing it as much as possible, rather than, you know, just look to the same all the time, then that'd be great, too. But we're, we're here to try and help how we can, it's a partnership.
We appreciate that.
Tobias?
Just one more general comment, which is that, um, I think this conversation we're having about parking in general is a good one, but I did wanna point out that when you try to enact certain economic forces in one location such as downtown and asking people to pay for parking in one location, you're gonna have some effects that you weren't necessarily anticipating, which might drive people to other places that you don't necessarily want to drive them to go. So, one of the things public transportation does is it takes a general aggregate funding source, the whole taxpayer, and it helps fund the buses for everybody to use. And I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but kind of the idea is it's harder to move around because there's an increase in traffic and then the market forces force people onto buses because they're easier to get around in. And assuming we add more priorities for them and create more bike paths, this problem should evolve in the future to solve itself. But I think also at the same time, we have to just be aware that when we're moving around, the economics of where it's, you're paid to park and here and there, there's gonna be consequences for doing that on our small businesses that we don't anticipate now.
All right, anything else on Fast Ferry Connector?
Well, other than, what are we gonna do?
I don't know if we got anywhere, really. We had a great discussion about, and we went in circles about fifteen times. The bottom line is, we need, I guess, Paula, you need to go back to the work group and see what kind of commitment we'll get from the private sector. And in the meantime, we'll ask the suit over there to find some money. I'm sorta kidding, but I'm not. I guess we need to find some funding from somewhere.
I just need to have an idea what I'm looking for as I start putting everything together.
I, I guess, I, I don't know.
Why don't we find out what the other donors could, can, continue to contribute for the foreseeable future and go from there?
And maybe the donors that are contributing now can kinda help us shake the tree of the people that are benefiting from this but aren't opening up their wallets. 'Cause there are a lot of them down there besides just you, Mr. Scudder, and the Steamship Authority who reeked the benefit of this. And as, as you said, Matt, now people aren't, we're not getting the complaints about, you know, trucks in front of my store all day and nobody's walking in.
Yeah, I was, I was, as soon as I was elected, I had three or four phone calls and it was all about this issue. It was businesses that had cars parked in front of them all day long, they were down twenty, thirty, forty percent. It was, you know, it was residents that had cars and trucks parked in front of their houses all weekend long as the guys left the island. So we've made some, you know, we made some good choices, we just have to keep, you know, continue it. Yeah. The other, the other thing I think is not a bad idea is, and I, and I disagree a little bit, Toby, you're saying, jeez, they, they, the state doesn't have a appetite for taxing, but I think saying we'd like to put a charge on the commuter book is not, that's just, that's tweaking it. And I think that's something we could send up and ask for. And, and that, you know, and maybe that's something we could ask for sooner rather than later.
The worst's gonna happen is they're gonna say no.
Maybe we ask for it at the special town meeting and get it up there, you know, get an answer.
I don't know.
Might be a little fast with a special town meeting, but the annual, we can always give it a try.
Do we even need to go to town meeting to ask for that?
Yeah, but I, I would say annual.
Yeah. Well, let's put it up, maybe.
I don't even know, I don't even know if we have to go to town meeting, really. Would we?
I think they're gonna ask if you have a town meeting vote.
Oh. Well, then, then we could do a sense of the meeting at this one if we put it on tonight.
A sense of this meeting?
Of this special towns meeting. Put it on this town, special town meeting and get, and then go up and ask for it. If it's, if it's not a, I don't know.
I think we need a warrant written, right?
Well, you, you need an article, I mean, I would recommend you go to the annual. You, there, there's a larger group of people there, this is where people would be expecting. I, I see your point, it would be great to try to get it in sooner rather than later, but it's gonna take a while.
I, I, I think that, given Paula and company's resourcefulness, we can find the funding for somewhere to get through 2016. And I have no problem, Matt, going to town meeting this spring and asking for, you know, the ferry fee to be extended to the commuter book. The worst that they're gonna say is no. You know, I mean, we, we can use, we can, we can allocate, we can say that the additional revenue will be allocated to public transportation. We can earmark it so that they don't feel like it's gonna go into a black hole.
Which is what it's gonna be used for, so.
We could give it to, you know, to, if there's more than what we need for this, for this bus route, we can use the rest of the NRTA budget. I'm sure Paula would mind a little extra money. I don't think there's gonna be that much, to be honest, but it'll help, so.
I, I actually bet there's a lot, because, do you, do you ever buy a regular ticket? No? Does anyone here buy a regular ticket? Everyone buys a commuter book, so.
Sometimes the same day.
Yeah, the same day 'cause they're a little cheaper, yeah.
Um, now to totally change the subject, but how do you feel about charging a fare for this, for next summer?
The two dollars, is that what you get now to go anywhere from the airport to town, Paula?
Yeah, it would be, my recommendation would be a two dollar each way.
Oh, yeah.
It's consistent with our other services.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it's gonna get people to not use it.
No.
So, you know, I think what's happening now is you've got people that are commuting to town to work and they're realizing that if they park there and get on, they don't have to pay the two bucks.
They should be getting charged, but.
But that's what they're doing. So, well, let's just consistently charge the two dollars for every fare and, I mean, do we need to vote on that or we need to do that at an NRTA meeting?
Well, I'll work into that, uh, for the NRTA advisory board when you approve the service budget.
That's probably what is happening. People are crafty.
I think to a, it, I think it's a small percentage, but thanks for publicly announcing the option.
Well, that's why we're gonna charge you two bucks.
Well, I'm worried about space, you know, if people start doing it. I mean, people parking and taking the bus is never a bad thing until you run out of space, but.
I think this is, this is a, this is actually gonna be another com, another workshop at some point here, you know, maybe not for six months, but we are, we're very fortunate right now with the NRTA that we have businesses that are allowing us to use their parking lots for parking rides. And as we get busier and busier, you know, if, if Fairgrounds decides one day that they don't want us to park there anymore, or the Chicken Box decides they don't want us to use their parking lot anymore, we're gonna be in trouble because a lot of people commute to these lots to go to town. So it's, it's an issue that we should probably start addressing sooner than later.
Bobby? Never heard truer words.
Anyway, I think we beat this horse to death, so to speak, or this bus. So let's move on to official business, the adoption of the November two thousand nine, uh, November nine, two thousand fifteen special town meeting warrant. And I believe, Eric, you're gonna put it up, 'cause we didn't get it till late.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll take you through it. There's some articles that have arisen today for your consideration. The first two articles are the citizen articles that are really the cause of the special
Libby, just a, just a quick question. On special town meetings, does the board usually provide any recommendation or thoughts or do we just usually send them along and it's a little more expedited process?
Well, it's, um, it's in the schedule of the timeline.
Right.
You, do you have an opportunity to make comments if you wish? Not tonight, late, well, maybe tonight.
I just, no, I read that, I'm just asking, does that normally take place? Is this, this'll be my first special town meeting, Bobby.
Well, it's really, it's no different, really, than, than the annual, you know, we go through the warrants and we decide if we wanna make a comment.
Yeah.
We can, or we can choose to just go with the FinComs. We can, we can, we can leave a blank, we can say we support the FinCom, we can say we don't support it.
Right, it's abbreviated, yeah.
Thank you, Bobby.
Article three would be an appropriation for the Brant Point Boathouse renovation, the shellfish propagation facility there. As we know, the bids came in higher than the appropriation, so the proposal would be to use, so, so the finance committee motion, hopefully, will actually outline how it, and how much and, and the funding source for that. And our recommendation is likely to be free cash, provided it's certified by then, which it better be. Article four, this is a correction of sorts to an appropriation that was approved at the, um, twenty fifteen annual town meeting. If the board will recall, we sought to appropriate a million dollars to, we sought to borrow a million dollars to fund design for the new facility. However, it was inadvertently made contingent upon a debt exclusion question at the, at the annual election, which was never meant to be a question, so the validity of that action is not, it's not valid. So we here would sort of redo it without that language that makes it contingent upon the debt exclusion. Article five came up today. It is looking more and more like our fifteen million dollar appropriation for the fire station is, as we began to suspect a few weeks ago, unlikely to be sufficient for the project as it's going forward. It's probably at, at least two million dollars short, so we need to get a little more information on that, but the proposal or the recommendation would be to possibly fund that out of free cash also, or, potentially, depending on how the board feels about it, utilize the real estate account, the, the, um, land sale account.
Which, what that money was for was one-time capital expansion.
Well, that's, um, something. There are some restrictions on what the funding in there can be used for. Currently, there's about four and a half million dollars in that account. So that, we don't have to decide that right at the moment. Article six would be a home rule petition to allow the land bank to transfer some land to the town, specifically to the school department for its staging area. I think some of you have been involved in those discussions. Can you show that math, Erica, so people can understand what we're talking about? So this is the land that, the shaded area are the land bank-owned parcels that would be transferred. The, um, property to the, that property there is the fields now. And at some point, not, I don't think at this annual, at this tortilla town meeting, we would need to make an exchange with the land bank for some other land to make up for this land. Correct, Andrew?
Do they need all of this for the school? Andrew? Five acres? Four and a half acres?
What was, yeah, a field is, a field is four acres, so it was taken for those reasons, yeah.
Right, and they.
Oh, okay, 'cause we're gonna put, I thought this was just for the staging, so this'll be after they're done building, we'll build fields on it.
Right, and the, and the parking area and the, and the garden and other things that need to be relocated.
Are there any deed restrictions on these parcels?
No. Other than, I mean, the deed restrictions are the land bank and that they're restricted to open space, yes.
Back to that warrant article for a second. There's a description in the article of these parcels. Highlighted in yellow there. They're highlighted in yellow because I wanted to make sure with other people that those are correct, which I'm told they are. However, we need to add the following wording, in addition to those parcels. A portion of pilot wheel drive abutting the parcel is described above, because there is a portion of that area that needs to be included. Lastly, what came up, um, actually a couple of months ago was the town clerk's salary was inadvertently, um, do you have article seven?
Yeah, well, it was in the last thing.
Oh, it wa, it, it was in the very, very last thing. Okay, well, it doesn't matter, I'll just tell you. The town clerk's salary for fiscal year sixteen was supposed to have increased at the twenty fifteen annual town meeting and inadvertently it remained the same. So the town clerk is asked if that could be corrected at this town meeting. It's, it's simply a technical correction, really. It had meant to be increased and it inadvertently was not.
It was approved, the increase was approved, but the number had never changed in the, in the article eight, so.
Yeah, it was basically approved by, by, that was the intent, to increase it from one amount to another and it never got changed in the final FinCom motion. So that was just considered a correction.
Kind of a technical, okay. That's it.
The, the less little technical things we have for the annual kinda weighs things out, it's nice.
Yeah. So seven articles.
Yep.
Shouldn't take more than three or four days. All right, um.
Well, tonight we're, tonight we're just adopting the warrant.
Right.
We'll have, we'll have further time to talk about the articles at some point, okay.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, so just, so, you know, well, if you wouldn't mind adopting the warrant, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll.
I'll move an option.
Is there a second? All, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, upcoming events on the warrant include, um, we're forwarded to the newspaper tomorrow, no, Monday. We forward it to FinCom tomorrow. FinCom is, um, actually meeting on about it tomorrow at six o'clock. It'll get published in the paper next week, next Thursday, the twenty-second. Monday, the twenty-sixth, at eight o'clock at night, there's a joint planning board, finance committee hearing on the articles.[1675.83] Planning Board will deal with the zoning articles. FinCom will hear about the others, and, and I guess including the zoning articles. They hopefully both will adopt their motions that evening. And we will get the warrant with the motions out to the printer as soon as possible after that, and hope that there can be a quick turnaround to get it printed and mailed out to all the voters. It's supposed to be out to the voters seven days ahead of the Special Town Meeting.
Just, sorry to interrupt, Libby.
Okay.
I know in the past we talked about eliminating that mail-out as.
We need a, a warrant article to do that.
Okay, so maybe at the Annual Town Meeting, we might talk about that.
We could add that, sure, yep. Um, and then the Special Town Meeting would start Monday, November ninth, at six o'clock, by school.
And that week, we don't have a selectmen's meeting because it's a holiday.
Correct.
All right, so.
What if, what if any of us wanted to go to the Planning Board and FinCom meeting?
If there's more than three of us, we don't, because we're in the audience.
We're not talking about it.
Yeah, if more than, should we post the meeting there just in case three, more than three of us show up?
Well, if you think you're going to deliberate at all, we should.
Well, I don't know if we'll deliberate, but we might ask questions of the FinCom and the Planning Board and the.
If you're asking, like, questions as individuals, you don't need to post it. And if there just happen to be three of you, it's fine, but as long as you're not sitting together and commiserating and deliberating.
No sharing popcorn, Bobby. I, I think we'll probably be all right. I think that you may see two or three of, or maybe even four of all of us there, but.
You, I, I forgot to mention, too, at your meeting on the twenty-eighth, we have an agenda, and for you to re-review the motions and adopt any comments that you might have.
So it might be nice to.
Well, I'd like to have staff recommendations, and I'd like to have an analysis. Some of this is pretty confusing. And the, the first article, the Dave Kim, the Afidil, that's pretty, you can, I can understand that one fairly easily. The next one, uh, was the, what was it, the neighborhood workforce housing one? I think that would, if I have it right, Andrew, that's gonna apply to more than just their property, correct? If that's, if we enact that?
It, it, it may. Um, we're, we're not really a fan of creating a bunch of overlay districts. Um, and so it all depends on the standards that are adopted. So it may apply to, I, I guess the key was to, for it to apply to larger properties versus smaller ones. There's already an allowance for apartment buildings in smaller neighborhoods. But that's, that's still what we need to sort of get together.
That's, yeah, that's, we sort of have to sort out what the actual impacts are of this thing. What, you know, what are the impacts on, you know, infrastructure, traffic, uh, cost of the school, all the different issues? If we adopt this and it changes things a lot. If it changes it a little bit, okay, it's a little bit, you know, we move on. But if it's substantial, which it could be, we just have to make sure. That's my take on it. I don't know what.
I just wanna be sure you understand, though, too, that this is really about the permitting path. The, the article doesn't really determine what the final outcome is, but it determines who is going to review that. Because the current, at least as it applies to this particular land, you know that there's a forty B application that's in process. We had that meeting today with the state. And if the articles don't pass, or some sort of version of them, that forty B process will continue. So, under either scenarios, you're gonna see traffic reports, you're gonna see those, those types of documents. But ultimately, it will be a forty B process. The zoning board of appeals becomes the permitting agency for everything. And the check is the Housing Appeal Committee at the state. If it's done through local zoning, the Planning Board, the H D C, whoever are the local boards, are their individual permitting group. And so, you know, it's a little confusing, but that's really, there's two different paths that this article is about.
No, and I, and I agree with, I agree with that path.
Yep.
But I wanna make sure at the same time that we're not opening up a can of worms for a bunch of other properties that we haven't thought about.
Right.
That, so I, I just, and if there's other impacts we haven't thought about, I wanna make sure that.
Sure.
That we've, we've, we've done our due diligence, our homework.
Right, I got you.
So, just to follow up a little bit on that, 'cause I wanna be sure, whatever staff reports we need, we have done in time. Will that be in the Planning Board's report? Like, what?
Well, I think it would be helpful to know exactly what the questions are. I know that the buildability questions that you talked about are, I think, if we adopt this standard, how many other lots are there that could use the same process?
Yes, if, if we do, if we adopt this.
Right.
Then where else will this apply?
Right, how many other potential areas would it open up, and what would the potential impact be over there, over the current? Is that sort of, okay, so.
And I, and it, 'cause part of this is, is, I wanna do this, I'm trying to do this positively because I think a lot of what happened at last year's town meeting was there was one set of numbers from the developer, another set of numbers from a private, you know, some, a FinCom member.
Right.
I think the truth was somewhere in between.
Right.
Uh, and I think there were some, you know, even the developer said there were some substantial impacts that we were gonna pay. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, we all, that it's done internally, we all have a number we can agree with. So when we have the town meeting, it doesn't degrade into, you know, arguing about those things, you know? It's actually, we actually have facts in front of us. That's what I'm trying to get to.
All right.
But we, we need to know the, in comparison to the forty B potentials for all of these properties, too, and how we can have more of an impact if Planning Boards reviewing it most likely, because all of our local guidelines come into play.
Well, that's right, and there's different.
Any other properties that are impacted could have the potential to go a forty B route.
Correct me, Andrew, if I'm wrong, but under the forty B process, the Z B A is the permitting authority. If the developer thinks, doesn't like what the Z B A has given them for requirements for, say, parking, or traffic, or sidewalks, or any of that, he can appeal to the State Housing Board.
Correct.
And say that it's adding undue costs to the project. And if they determine that that is in fact the case, then those, those requirements get removed and the project goes forward.
Correct.
Under the zoning change, the Planning Board reviews it, the Planning Board findings are pretty much set in stone without going through the appeals process to the courts, correct?
Well, it, they would issue a special permit or not, and they negotiate the kind of conditions, you know, based on impacts.
But things like parking and sidewalks and lighting are much eas, we have a much stronger case to negotiate those through the Planning Board than we do through the forty B process.
Right, and there's not the pathway to the Housing Appeal Committee. The, the appeals could go to court, which, which you still have appeals that can go to court in a forty B process. But I think those of you who have attended training, right, Tobias, thank you for.
I am trained.
You, you are. And, um, there was another training coming up that Libby had talked about. The state's standard is adequate, and you really need to understand that. So, if, if we go that route, that's, and that's fine if that's what people are comfortable with or willing to accept. But that's that particular route. And forty, you know, we can do so much analysis based on the properties that actually have an application. But as you know, until we get to our ten percent, a forty B can pop up anywhere.
And, and just to add into that, so under this current scenario, the, if, if someone followed through and went the planning route, you know, if this was adopted and they went through the planning route, they would still have the option to go through a forty B route. It wouldn't be like we'd be circumventing that. So they're, they're both still in play, Bobby.
But we have, we have a better chances of, of working with the developer. Well, yes and no, I guess. It all depends on the developer.
It all depends on developer. Our best, our best scenario for controlling development and evolving as a nice community is to, to pursue a ten percent affordability, which is possible. And we can do that following the safe harbor provisions that are in Mass General law that enable a community, if they reach point five percent of their affordable housing in a given year, which would be roughly twenty-four units at our current level of affordability in one year. If we achieve point five percent, twenty-four units in one year, that would give us a one-year stay forty B. If we did forty-eight units, that would be a two-year stay of forty Bs. And so, when you start to talk about that, um, those kind of numbers, and you look at some forty B developers going in and doing some development where they're doing twenty percent affordable and they're building, you know, dozens of units, that helps get us to where we wanna be. So they're not, forty Bs aren't necessarily always bad. It's how do we work with developers to allow our growth to happen in a healthy way?
Okay.
I agree.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. With that, we're at the end of our agenda. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn. We have about nine thousand documents assigned for Erica, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.